Good afternoon, everyone. It is Thursday, September 4th, approximately 1:00 p.m. This is the regular meeting of the Rancher Mirage City Council and Community Services District, Energy Authority, Housing Authority, Joint Powers Finance Authority, Library and Observatory, and Redevelopment Successor Agency Boards. I would now ask you to join me in a salute to our wonderful country. Please repeat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Downs. Councilmember Fromberg Edelstein. Councilmember O'Keefe.
Here.
Mayor Protem Molado.
Here.
Mayor Weil.
Thank you. I will ask for a motion to excuse Councilmember Downs, please.
I move to excuse Councilmember Downs.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
The first item on our agenda is a presentation today by Hidden Harvest, and Francisco Linares, Executive Director of Hidden Harvest, will make the presentation. If you would, Francisco, welcome.
My name is Francisco Linares. I'm the new Executive Director. When our founder, Kristi Porter, retired last year, I was honored to step into the role. I've been with Hidden Harvest for the past 20 years, starting from the ground as an employee. And that time, I've seen the difference fresh, healthy food makes for our seniors and families across the Coachella Valley. About Hidden Harvest, Hidden Harvest exists to make fresh produce free and accessible to our neighbors who need it most. We have our senior markets. We have three programs. One of them is our senior markets, which we bring a pop-up farmer's market style distribution directly to affordable housing sites, senior centers across the Coachella Valley, where senior choose from seasonal fruits and vegetables, always free, dignified, and easy to access. These markets stretch tight budgets and support better health food for our most vulnerable groups. We just were starting next week, senior market here in Rancher Mirage, so we wanted the community to know we're going to be out there. We're starting with Parkview Villas, and there's other neighbor communities of housing there we want to try to get into. We just purchased a new refrigerator truck to be able to transport all this fresh produce, actually be fresh for them. The other community partners that we have is who distribute produce to us is Jocelyn Center, Fine Food Bank. This is produce that we rescue from local packing houses here in the valley, any surplus that they have. We also have another program, which is a small farmers program, where we go and hire small farmers who have an acre or more, and we tell them what we need for our seniors, what kind of plants. We buy the seed or transplant for them. They put them on the ground, and when it's time to harvest, we pay them to harvest it and we buy it on market price. So donations that we get and everything stays here in the valley, and our produce is actually grown here. So those are some of the programs that we have. With Rancher Mirage, I would like to give you guys an invitation. We are having a luncheon in November, the 20th, which we would like to have you guys. We'd love to have you. It's a luncheon fashion show and silent auction in Agua Caliente. It's November 20th. This event directly funds more produce for our seniors, families, and if you could attend and sponsor a table or donate an auction item, you'll be putting fresh food into local kitchens right away. So before I close, it's thank you for the opportunity and to introduce it in Harvest, and thank you again.
Well, thank you, Francisco.
Any questions?
Hidden Harvest does a great job.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you being here today.
Thank you. Can I hand out these invitations to you?
You can go ahead and leave them with me, and I'll pass them out. Thank you.
We will now go to council member comments. I'll start on my right with Mayor Protem Molado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very quickly, I hope everyone enjoyed their summer. We're approaching the cooler months, which I'm most welcome. I know I will be most welcoming, too. To all of our commissioners who have either joined or been reassigned to their commissions, thank you for volunteering your time. We have a busy season before us, and we're just going to say thank you ahead of time because you'll be working. You'll be working very hard, and we look forward to having you working with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Over to my left, to E Fromberg Edelstein.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to wish all the students in our valley a good school year. We've actually, I think, been back in school for about a month already for most of us, but I wish them a good and safe school year, and especially to those graduating this year, high school seniors, big deal. And also to our sheriffs who had a busy week so far. Thank you for your service in the heat and the humidity. And CAL FIRE that was also busy, I think, up the mountain in the last few weeks, so thank you for your service.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I would just like to say I also hope everyone had a great summer. It's nice to be back, but I just would like to say thank you to Hidden Harvest. I've received, since some changes have been made and you've been involved with the community, I've had several people talk about how happy they are with the quality of the food, with the amount of the food, so I'm excited that you're participating in our city. Thank you very much. Thanks, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a couple of very brief comments. September is National Read a Book Month, and I would encourage anyone in our audience that is viewing this program to take advantage of our world-class library and observatory. Get a library card. There is no charge. It's free, and it's a wonderful opportunity. Reading is a great, great joy. So we have this very brief video regarding the National Read a Book Day. If you would, play that.
Reading can change lives. My name is Diane Deegle, Senior Librarian at the Rancher Mirage Library and Observatory. September 6th, 2025, is National Read a Book Day, and we encourage everyone to pick up their favorite book, throw in their AirPods, and listen to an audiobook, open their Kindle, read an ebook, any way you can. National Read a Book Day is important because it encourages book lovers of all ages to do their favorite activity, which is reading.
Fantastic. You can see his eyes light up because he's starting to imagine things. So he loves reading time.
I like books. Reading is so important, and books are, too. It's just a fun way to get his imagination started.
September is National Library Card Sign Up Month, and we encourage everyone to come sign up and get a library card with the Rancher Mirage Library and Observatory. Library cards are free of charge to anyone with a valid California ID. You come to the library, you fill out a short application, or you can start the application online. We get you set up. It takes just a couple minutes, and then you have access to all of our books and DVDs, ebooks, online streaming opportunities, all for free. For more information about all of these events, go to ranchermiragelibrary.org. Both of these are a great opportunity to come explore your local library. We have something for everybody.
As you know, the library in Rancher Mirage is literally world-class, and it has a variety of programs that are going on virtually daily for all age groups, whether it be children up through seniors. It is an incredible asset that we have, and we're most proud of it. I'd also like to commend the Sheriff's Department initially for the amount of effort that they put out over, they do it every day, but in this case, it was over the Labor Day holiday. The amount of visible vehicles you had out, and frankly, motorcycles was overwhelming. I have one friend that said, "What's going on?" He said, "Boy, am I careful as far as I, driving is concerned." It is a challenging holiday, as we know, and constitutes sadly a number of DUIs, and so therefore was in need of additional sheriffs out. So thank you. And again, CAL FIRE, thank you for standing by to the degree that you do, for helping so many people in need. We have a community where the demographics dictate that your services are needed regularly, so again, we thank you for your service beyond compare. That being said, we will now go to the City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, before we leave this item, there was a public speaker card presented for item number three.
Okay.
Brad Anderson.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Brad Anderson, City of Rancher Mirage. I'm delighted to be here, and I wanted to speak on what you just spoke about, the public services, police, and fire. And I agree, they are outstanding in our city, and I've seen them noticeably on Highway 111, hopefully not doing speed enforcement or radar-type actions, but just slowing traffic down by the mere presence is delightful to know that they are, I guess, interacting with the public in that matter. So I'm with you. I support our police and fire, and I have no arguments of the enforcement actions that they're doing in the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We will now go to the City Manager with his comments and report.
No comments today, so I'll go ahead and move on to our consent calendar agenda item number five. The council has 12 items on the consent calendar for consideration, items 5A through 5L. Item 5A is to waive the full reading of any ordinance introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item 5B is to adopt ordinance number 1225, zoning text amendment case number ZTA 25-0002, amending Chapter 17.30, Section 17.30.27D, penalty of the Rancher Mirage Municipal Code. Item 5C are your July 17th, 2025, regular city council meeting minutes. Item 5D is to appoint Mr. Hill to the Rancher Mirage Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission. Item 5E is to authorize opioid settlement agreements with Purdue Sackler and the approval and execution of future opioid settlement agreements. Item 5F is the approval of the Rancher Mirage Energy Authority 2024 Power Source Disclosure. Item 5DG, excuse me, is authorization for the City Manager to procure six Level 3 DC fast charging units as part of the Southern California Edison Charge Ready Funding Grant Program. Item 5H is amend, approval of the amendment of the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, ROPS, for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Item 5I is to approve the updated calendar year 2025 salary schedule. Item 5J is the receive and file of the Quarterly Treasures Report for the quarter ending June 30th, 2025. Item 5K are contracts. Item 5L are demands. And before we go to council comments or questions, I'll ask the city clerk to take public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you. Brad Anderson?
Thank you again, Brad Anderson, City of Rancher Mirage. I wanted to speak on a few items on the consent calendar, and I won't monopolize a meeting, so I'll be quick. Item 5A, 5B, 5C, and 5F, and 5I is something I would like to speak about momentarily. 5A is the full reading of these ordinance. I think that may be, I did write some comments on some of them earlier for the public record, but maybe in the future, on certain selective items, maybe reading them aloud into the public record, so the people at home that don't go through the thousands of pages normally of a city council or agenda packet would know exactly what's going on. And item 5B, this is a second reading of ordinance to really, I guess, point it at short-term renders, most people probably don't know that, of a tier-based system for penalties and fines and fines. And I did oppose that, and I still do. And item 5C is the city minutes. I wish I can go into detail, but I won't. The city has changed in how they record the written minutes, meaning they don't record, like my minutes. My public comments won't be recorded actively. Maybe just my name. Maybe that will be the only thing. And also, that goes right back to the minutes, I believe. The last consent calendar that I spoke on, it was written down that it was non-agenda public comments. Again, it's just a technicality, but if we're going to do this, we might as well do it right and maybe adjust that. And I'm going to go on to 5F, I believe. Minutes 5F, and that's the parole authority with the Southern California Edison. I believe you're buying some juice from them, meaning parole. I know the City Manager, not to throw him under the bus, but he has said he's not a fan of Southern California Edison, and we rely on them, so I think maybe keeping the, well, I guess, we need Southern California Edison, so maybe we can look at them as peers and act accordingly to that. And 5I, update this calendar year salary schedule. I think that all goes back to the city clerk. At the last meeting in July, I did write some public comments concerning this, where there was agenda item after closed session, and I wasn't allowed to speak before the official report was read, and that's an issue. That's like not letting the public comment or even know about agenda items. This has happened before, so hopefully you can correct that and keep that from happening in the future. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That was the only speaker card. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the consent calendar? That was the only speaker.
Thank you. I'll ask, are there any council comments regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion, please.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilmember O'Keefe, can you try yours one more time? You may have to touch your screen. Okay. Thank you. Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. We'll now go to the public hearings, and the first item is item 6A, and it's a resolution amending the vehicle impound cost recovery fee and adopting a DUI vehicle impound cost recovery fee. Tyler Folks, our senior management analyst. Tyler, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. The item before you today is a proposed amendment to the city's vehicle impound cost recovery fee and the adoption of a new DUI impound cost recovery fee. The vehicle impound cost recovery fee, or VICR, is a fee that the city charges when law enforcement impounds a vehicle. It covers the administrative costs of the impound, such as deputy time, paperwork, coordinating with tow operators, and clerical processing. Importantly, it is not designated to generate revenue. It is only used to reimburse the city for actual costs incurred. The VICR fee for the city of Rancher Mirage was first established in 2001 at $75, and then raised once in 2010 to $145. It has not been updated in over 15 years, even though the costs for law enforcement services have risen significantly. State law allows cities to recover the actual cost of impoundments, but requires that such fees not exceed those costs. Staff's review shows that the current $145 fee no longer covers the city's expenses. Additionally, DUI-related impounds require substantially more law enforcement time, testing, and reporting than a standard impound, necessitating its own fee structure. Considering this information, staff recommends a two-tier fee structure, which includes a base rate for all vehicle impounds increased from $145 to $229, and the establishment of a DUI impound fee of $1147. These figures are based directly on sheriff contract rates and actual staff time. This resolution also authorizes annual adjustments tied to the sheriff's contract rate increases. This ensures that the fee remains accurate without requiring repeated council action. Staff recommends adoption of Resolution Number 2025, next in order, amending the vehicle impound cost recovery fee and adopting the new DUI vehicle impound cost recovery fee. This will ensure the city recovers its costs and complies with state regulations. Thank you, and staff are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tyler. Are there any public comments?
Yes. Brad Anderson?
Hello again, Brad Anderson. I currently live in the City of Rancher Mirage for a little bit longer, anyway. I wanted to speak on this public hearing item number 6A concerning the staff report that was just mentioned. I'm opposed to this mainly because of the extreme costs related to the DUI and other intrusion policy. I do read through the city, I guess, agenda packets quite often, and there are a lot of DUI institutes related to the city expenses, I guess. I don't know why, why we're renting a car for the sheriff's department and other aspects of the motorcycle fleet and keeping them upgraded. Not that I'm anti-police, believe me, but I am concerned of those costs and how the contract does cover those. So there are other administrative fees related to that with the city, and maybe we should look at that. And again, this imposes that the contract with Riverside County Sheriff's Department oversees or adjusts this fee structure as time goes by and it sort of increases, I'm sure. I would like the city council to review this, you know, as costs increase and not just give blanket authority to have it raised without mention to the city population that pays for a lot of that. So that's my qualms. Again, we're going from $145. Not that I'm a DUI supporter, believe me, but I think $1,000 and some dollars in city costs, I believe. That's extreme, and maybe we need to monitor why that's so high. And that's all I have. Oh, I did write some public comments. I am concerned about how the public hearing items are being discussed and written comments are being demanded prior to the meeting, says if I submitted them now, they will be seen in a public hearing. This is part of the public hearing, is the testimony, and if I did submit written comments, they should be accepted and read, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That was the only speaker card. Is there anyone else who would like to speak and provide testimony regarding public hearing item 6A? That was the only speaker.
Thank you. I'll ask for council comments regarding this item. I guess the only comment I would make is the way to avoid the cost is don't drink and drive, and then there will be no complaints. That being said, I will call for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution 2025, next in order, amending the vehicle impound cost recovery fee and adopting a DUI vehicle impound cost recovery fee.
And I'll second. Sorry. I'm loud, anyway.
Motion and second, please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. The next item is item 7A, and that's the annexation number 199 to Community Facilities District Number 1, and that will be presented by Jacob De La Cruz, our financial analyst. Jacob, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, council. This item is the first step in the city's annexation process for developments within the city's jurisdiction. The second and final step is planned to be considered at the October 16th council meeting. The territory proposed for annexation is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Bob Hope Drive and Gerald Ford Drive. It is comprised of two parcels totaling approximately 5.4 acres, and the project is slated to construct a one-story skilled nursing facility of approximately 42,500 square feet. Tendative parcel map 38844 was originally approved by the Planning Commission on April 27, 2023, with condition of approval number 43 for the project, requiring that the territory be annexed into Community Facilities District Number 1. In accordance with the condition of approval, the owner of the annexed territory submitted a petition for annexation requesting that the city council initiate proceedings to annex the territory into CFD-1 and provide for expedited approval of the annexation and the levy of the special tax. Upon approval of the resolution, the city will be able to accept the petition submitted by the owner for annexation, consent to the levy upon the annexed territory, allow for the shortening of the time for the special election to expedite the annexation, accept and preliminarily approve the annexation map, and direct the city clerk to record the map, and finally establish the date and time of the public hearing on the annexation of the territory. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jacob. Are there any public comments?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone who would like to comment on item 7A? No speakers.
Thank you. Are there any council comments regarding 7A? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion on the item, please.
I'll make the motion. The council adopt Resolution Number 2025, next in order, declaring the city's intention to annex territory to Community Facilities District Number 1 and to levy a special tax therein for additional police and fire services, preliminarily approve a map of the area proposed to be annexed, and schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation and the levy of a special tax for annexation number 199.
There is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. The next item will be item 7B, the annexation number 200 to Community Facilities District Number 1, also being presented by Jacob De La Cruz. Jacob, I hope you're comfortable in that seat, and it's all yours again.
Thank you again, Mayor. This item is the first step in the city's annexation process for developments within the city's jurisdiction. The second and final step is planned to be considered at the October 16th council meeting. The territory proposed for annexation is located in Section 31, approximately 650 feet south from the intersection of Monterey Avenue and Gerald Ford Drive on the west side of Monterey Avenue. It is comprised of six parcels totaling approximately 72.88 acres, and the project is slated to subdivide the existing parcels into 23 parcels for various uses. Tendative tract map 38844. Tentative tract map 38990 was originally approved by the planning commission on March 13, 2025, with condition of approval number 9 for the project requiring that the territory be annexed into Community Facilities District Number 1. In accordance with the condition of approval, the owner of the annexed territory submitted a petition for annexation requesting that the city council initiate proceedings to annex the territory into CFD-1 and provide for expedited approval of the annexation and the levy of the special tax. Upon approval of the resolution, the city will be able to accept the petition submitted by the owner for annexation, consent to the levy upon the annexed territory, allow for the shortening of time for the special election to expedite the annexation, accept and preliminarily approve the annexation map and direct the city clerk to record the map, and finally establish the date and time of the public hearing on the annexation of the territory. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jacob. Are there any public comments regarding this?
Yes. Brett Anderson?
Hi. I'm Brett Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I wanted to speak on item 7B. And again, this is staff report. Just went through that. This is Session 31, and part of 31. I'm all in favor of setting a scheduled public hearing. Hopefully, it'll be done correctly, and people can give their public comment if they wish on this. I have no qualms concerning this. I believe the last city council was the one that increased everybody's taxes by roughly $1 million a year. And one of the city council members mentioned this by name being one of the reasons to do that. So now that 13 homes or whatever is built in there, maybe they can start paying for that added fire and police.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That was the only speaker card. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on Item 7B? That was the only speaker.
Thank you. Are there any council comments regarding Item 7B? No. Okay. That being said, I will ask for a motion, please.
I'll move that the council adopt Resolution Number 2025, next in order, declaring the city's intention to annex territory to Community Facilities District Number 1 and to levy a special tax therein for additional police and fire services. Prelimarily approve a map of the area proposed to be annexed and schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation and the levy of the special tax for annexation number 200.
And I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. We will now go to non-agenda public comments. Are there speaker requests?
Yes. The first speaker is Wally Melendez.
happened a few months ago here, when a meeting is rescheduled from the regular meetings, what happened that time was that the meeting was held on Wednesday instead of Thursday. And I realize that the announcement is put on the board that's outside. Now, who goes about checking boards for anything that I know of? So the meeting was held on Wednesday, Good afternoon, City Council. I'd like to make some recommendations, and these recommendations and the people that come regularly on Thursday missed that meeting, and they didn't find are directed to the Mayor, Mayor Wile. about it. They didn't find out about it until it was too late. Excuse me. I have 45 seconds left of my... It would be nice that when a member of the City Council misses a meeting, that the mayor would announce what is the reason that the member missed in order not to keep the Anyway, I'd like to say a few words about the state of the country. The state of the audience, the people in the suspense. country is in bad shape. We have President Donald Trump that has consistently, for many, many years, saying that he wants to be a dictator. And he is being a dictator, and we are in bad shape. That has to stop.
Thank you for your comments.
Patrick Laurie?
Good afternoon. You can see that I'm all ready for hockey. So we old-time hockey players who still ache and everything over our lousy careers are happy to see it come around again. I want to speak to something, and very bluntly so. Have you had a chance to see Loftus versus Eisenhower, the judgment? Okay. Look at it. It'll shake you up. I resent the fact that we gave $2 million to Eisenhower based on a letter that looks like those letters sixth graders write when they want a signature from the president. $2 million. Raise your own money. Do a bond. Ask for a loan from the city. Whatever you want to do. What we could do with $2 million for our residents is far beyond what Eisenhower is going to do with it for childcare. Now, I want to read something. This is regard to their CEO, Mcelio. If I don't pronounce it right, frankly, I don't care. "It defies logic that Mr. Mcelio, so fully in charge, could be so completely ignorant of the widespread problems caused by the person he selected as program director." In the judgment, he's called a liar. His HR person of all names, I think it's Fickle. Okay, his testimony has been impeached. Reading this will tell you more about how Eisenhower operates and what its value needs to be and isn't for this community. Okay? No more ambivalent thoughts. They're going to get worse than ambivalent. Now, I'm sorry you don't have Mr. Downs here. Being a great supporter of police, I wanted to spend a few seconds of my time to educate him on statistics. I'll do that next time I see him. Crime is an important issue, and you need to look at it properly. Okay? It doesn't mean you don't like sheriffs. Doesn't mean we don't support sheriffs. It just means let's be practical, guys. Read the contract we have with the sheriff department. 83 hours a day, day in and day out. If you think you see them here, 83 hours a day, fine. I don't. My little group of people that were gathering up here to kind of do something of an impact on this city in the next election don't see it. Love cops. Get on our streets. Eisenhower. Guys, take a look at Loftus. That's costing them $1.6 million without punitive damages yet assessed. Next comes the person who says, "I got COVID because of these characters at Eisenhower, and now I want a class action." They're also paying out $880,000 because of some data error that they made. I hope my $2 million isn't going to pay for any of this. Excuse my harshness, but this stuff really bothers me. There is no, no Jesus Christ, the way Mr. Downs would like to pretend there is at Eisenhower. It's not a church. It's not a place to go for worship. Thank you very much for your time. Very much.
Thank you for your comment.
And bless the police, and go Firebirds.
Brett Anderson?
Hello again, Brett Anderson. Currently living in the City of Rancho Mirage. I wanted to speak on three topics, maybe, maybe more. I kind of drawed some stuff down while people were speaking. I agree with one of the previous speakers concerning excused absence. I wasn't at the beginning of the meeting, so I didn't know if it was or not, but an explanation would be helpful, especially when people are getting paid to be here and they're not. And I think the public has the right to know, especially if it's excused. It could be health-related, it could be a number of things. And it's just public information, and sharing that would be great. There was talk about the DUI and maybe not doing that and not proposing towing. I totally agree with you, Mr. Mayor, and I would say speeding would be just as bad. So we can't laugh off one infraction for another. So everything's serious when it comes to highways and safety. So maybe don't speed. That would help, too. And I wanted to speak. I know we got rid of a city department that more or less cleans the streets and sidewalks and so forth, and this city is in disrepair. I've been walking a lot lately, and I can't say, I can't say, I think this is the dirtiest, meaning unkept streets swept. I can't tell you how much garbage I picked up, including screws and nails on the redways. And maybe we can do a little better job. I know we have subcontractors, and that's where the city's going with that, apparently, unannounced to most people. But maybe we can address that a little better. I know the city manager is doing the best he can, and maybe, maybe, maybe we can, everybody can help him out, I guess. And another thing, Mr. Downs is not here, but at the last trial meeting, he made some comments concerning closed session items, and I think he was addressing me in those comments. I suggested that we have minutes kept, and that is a widely common practice in the state of California. Not for me to read, just to have them for the safety of the council, and having other representatives possibly at those meetings, meaning fire chief or a police captain, somebody trustworthy. And that's all I wanted. It's not that I can ask them questions. It's just something transparency would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Susan Ragsdale?
I came all the way from the top of Desert Hot Springs with two buses and a lot of walking, and I made a stop at the library to print out my report for today because it's longer than three minutes. How are you doing? Happy September. I'm pleased to see you all. Yeah. So my comment is, I printed it at the, I text. I text to my friend, Christian Jimenez, and he forwards them as emails to you. I don't know who is reading them, if anyone, you know what I mean. I hope Marcus Aliman is, at least. I'm just worn out. The bus stops are too far apart, and I missed the bus at the library. Anyway, all right, this is not a lawsuit. However, it warrants one. Any reasonable person would feel the same. This is a police report. This report is a claim against the City of Rancho Mirage. I claim that since March 2019, the City of Rancho Mirage intentionally and seriously victimized and injured me in a case of long-term, extreme elder abuse and two counts of fraud. In capital letters, I am innocent. How many times have I said it already? Since March 2019, the City of Rancho Mirage forced me into an extraordinary, cruel, and seriously unwelcome position. The city's federal crimes against me catapulted me into a long-term, desperate struggle in self-defense. Being victimized at all levels, from tenant bullies up to the mayor, the mayors, three mayors or so, it's been taxing and traumatic, a life-and-death situation for me. The city defrauded me of my affordable head housing where I had lived since May 2018, when Mr. Hagerman started his position. However, I have been a citizen of the City of Rancho Mirage since 2009, and I consider it my home, of course. The city's motive for ruthlessly persecuting me was unjustified and sadistic revenge. In October 2019, the city scapegoated me falsely, claiming I was an In-N-Out Burger protester. Furthermore, the city resented my concerns about unhealthy, unshielded LED lighting. The city didn't get it. They didn't even try. Okay, so I'm running out of time. I made four pages. I didn't put page numbers on, but I really would like you to take, especially the Housing Commissioner lead. I do believe this is worthy of an investigation for sure, and I also need you to help me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? That was the last speaker.
All right. We will now be going into a recess for a closed session. I will ask the city attorney to give us a briefing on the subject matter to be discussed.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll be convening in the closed session for the item before you listed as 9A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1. Case name Ricky Martinez v. City of Rancho Mirage. Case number CVPS 2503449.
Thank you. We are now in recess. The City Council is back in session from recess. I will ask the attorney to please review what was covered in the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no reportable action taken today.
That being said, meeting adjourned.